All right, welcome to the Justice County Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, September 7th, 2023. It's 9:30 a.m. We would like to start off with a prayer by Pastor Adam Johnson.
Good morning. Thank you for this morning. Thank you for this is a cool one. Thank you for the beauty of your world. Thinking back to this coming weekend of 2011. Thank you for those who served in that and for family. Maybe remembering those harsh memories would do comfort on this. Thankful for what you've done in our country and the many freedoms we enjoy. Father, your word tells us to pray for camp and those who are in high positions. So I just lift up these council members and give them wisdom. All the decisions they make, they're with honor and glory. Your sons and my pride.
You could remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the highest court of justice for all.
Hey, approved or minutes, August 17th, 2023. Are there any objections?
Got it covered.
Yes, ma'am.
On like the fourth full page. It's from the previous page. We're doing an exoneration, but the ticket number does not match what's in the. Yeah. And then the next page. It's a minor thing under 6B. There's a duplication on the motion seconded and. That's all I.
Any objections? All right, here, none with those changes. The that there's no other objections that are approved. Approval accounts payable for August 24th, 2023 to amount 158,273.63 cents. If there are no objections, it is approved. Or accounts payable for August 31st, 2023, amount of 476,282.38 cents. If there are no objections, that's approved. That's payable for September 7th, 2023, or $18,000,283.3 cents. If there are no objections, that is approved. Manual checks, August 25th, 2023, to amount of 107,899.28 cents. If there are no objections, that's approved. Or manual checks for September 1st, 2023, 119,000.208.83 cents. If there are no objections, it's approved. Manual checks for September 8th, 2023, and about 105,546.46 cents. Objections, that is approved for approval requisitions. September 7th, 2023, and amount of 49,471.93 cents. If there are no objections, that is approved for account payroll for September 1st, 2023, to amount of 341,074.45 cents. If there are no objections, that is approved. Are there any announcements?
I do have one.
Okay.
On September 19th, it is National Voter Registration Day. Will be a voter drive conducted in the front of the courthouse from 10 to 4. And you can come out and vote.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to want to public comment. Come up, state your name and your address if you don't mind taking the seat from the bailiff. We'll start off with, you have three minutes of time. Mr. Jackie Millhouse on the first list.
Good morning. In yesterday's article, in the spirit of Jefferson, a member of this commission decided as making the following statement. Federal law prevents a local jurisdiction from denying telecommunication towers. Let me share with you just a few of the dozen of instances across the nation where that simply is an untrue statement. The ledger reports August 17th, 2023, that the city of Lakeland, Florida, won its case over a proposed cell tower. June 2023, Environmental News reports that the city of Leon, Michigan, successfully won a battle in court against a cell tower being placed at a school. How could it be that more and more cities are winning the battle if that commissioner's statement is true? The 2020 FCC declaratory ruling regarding authority over local jurisdiction is about modification of existing cell towers. The statement made by our elected would mislead public opinion into thinking that they simply have to surrender local authority. Isn't there a difference between modifying what exists and proposing a new tower? Something to look into. Before the People's Planning Commission make any statements that influence public opinion about cell tower placement, they should consider thinking about protecting the rights of the multitude who are going to lose from the cart launch policy interpretation. Jefferson County has telecommunication ordinances. In the spirit of those ordinances suggests that new cell towers belong in an industrial, commercial zone and non-residential areas. I have to believe that the planning commission or this commission would not interpret or use those ordinances to purposely deceive taxpayers using land grab policies for themselves or against fellow citizens. I have to believe that this commission would not intentionally create zoning maps that conflict with land use maps as a means to form loopholes to increase personal wealth or maximize corporate authority over local government. Private property rights go both ways, but the government's purpose is to protect all citizens. Rationalizing freedoms to favor or advance one at the expense of the enemy leads to polarization of the community and dictatorship, not a fair government of, by, and for the people. The only thing worse than handing over the people's government to an authoritarian dictatorship is a public servant making a public statement giving the people no hope. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tony Milburn, and I currently serve as president of the Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Commission. Our staff and board members have worked since 2020 toward securing additional parkland for the citizens of Jefferson County, board members who gave hundreds of volunteer hours to make this happen. It took three years of painstaking negotiations in a partnership with the Chesapeake Bay Conservancy, the West Virginia Land Trust, and a local family to finalize the acquisition of more than 80 additional acres of parkland adjacent to the Shenandoah River. Note that parks along the rivers are the number one request of citizens for recreational purposes in securing parkland. Not only was this in addition to our facilities, it was a unique deal that involved partners working to secure conservation of this land, something that was not done before. A well-attended ceremony was held at Riverside on August 22nd, hosted not only by your Parks Department, but our partners as well. Invitations and reminders to this event were issued to each of you at this table. Joel Dunn, president of the Chesapeake Bay Conservancy, recognized all of those who came out, including Parks and Rec Board members, past and present, and their staff. He recognized federal agencies, including the National Park Service, who sent representation. The Outdoor Heritage Fund, or the Outdoor Heritage Conservation Fund, had individuals there as they awarded grant funding to help with this purchase. Municipal mayors were there, who have their own parks and recreation departments or commissions. Staff from several county departments attended. Our Charleston delegates were there, state senators were there. Representatives from Senator Manchin, Senator Capito, and Congressman Mooney's offices were all in attendance and gave remarks. Imagine our embarrassment when Mr. Dunn called on the Jefferson County Commission to speak and not one person stood. An embarrassment, yes, and an insult to our partners in this deal. But worse yet was the insult to the Moulton family, who came from as far away as Massachusetts and California to see this conservation deal come to fruition to keep their family's land in pristine condition and safe from development. An embarrassment and an insult, as every one of you at this table received an invitation, yet could not give one hour of your day to attend. Shame on you.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong resident, 107 Tab Lane, Harper's Ferry, West Virginia. They have family been here longer, as but Virginians than they have Westerns. That sign up there is wrong. I see the public comment seating facilities have been downgraded. It's pretty sad. Now that everyone has seen their taxes increased, rent, if it hadn't increased, we'll be. We got a fire tax and a lot of it comes. We'll be paying a lot more. So how safe do you feel? Just a year ago, we had seven independent volunteer fire companies working together to have some of the lowest response times, even matching or born beyond other jurisdictions. Now, the chances of you having emergency services from other jurisdictions has increased. So how long do you think that's the last? I've heard not for long. I've been asked, why does this happen? American Rescue Plan, $11 million. Use that money, you had to use the new plan or project. Mission Stalper, all from Tab earmarked $5 million to take over the ambulance service. Thinking that $5 million would be enough to start this ambulance service. Jefferson County, JCESA, could increase charges and it could make money. The problem is voluntary fire companies have invested hundreds of millions of dollars over 100 or more years. The volunteer fire companies have provided, been able to provide and manage money better, and the volunteers made it look easy. The county commission sold the taxpayer a Ponzi scheme and claimed that EMTs would be better trained. All volunteers or pay the EMTs must be trained the same to have a license. I encourage the public to look up the response times from a year ago and compare them to today. All emergency services are not created equal. I have one question. Do you feel safer? Challenge the county commissioners now, Stalper and Jane Tab, before you need emergency services instead of it being too late. It's hard to be safe, current county commissioners. They saved your attention and your time. The world is in pretty bad shape. You guys need to help make it better.
Christine, can you hear us?
Yes. My name's Christine Marshall. I would like to give comments. I'm asking that you please reject the redevelopment and TIF proposal as it's currently written, as the excise property TIF benefits a private developer, which is not the intent of the legislation. Had the same redevelopment district been set with a tax revenue directed to a publicly owned project such as Harper's Ferry Water Works or the train service, that would benefit the public and incentivize new businesses to develop in Harper's Ferry. That would be an appropriate use. Secondly, I've looked at several news articles on projects on TIF bonds in Harrison County, as Mr. Stump suggested. It appears their county is still dealing with the TIF districts approved in 2006. After projected revenue did not materialize, the bonds were not repaid. In 2023, the county commission restructured the bond debt, extended the TIF district into 2052 to resell. To, I'm sorry, to extended the TIF district into 2052 and engaged a global brokerage investment bank to resell the bonds with further restructuring. I do hope you have looked into the debacle in Harrison County and how failed projects could affect the finances of Jefferson County and the county commission. Is that what you want? To take out multiple bonds for private industry? And I do hope you've carefully looked at this. Thank you.
Yeah, good deal. All right, we're going to want to generate a number of anti-bans, Sessom.
I have five today. Getting better. Shrinking. Okay, the first one is in our 2023 Personal Property Book. Taxpayer did not own the 2015 Mazda. Assess value $8,040, tax amount $187.81. Taxpayer is Angie LeClaire. Ticket number 315921.
Approved ticket number 315921. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
This one's in our 2023 Personal Property Book, Harper's Ferry District. Taxpayer did not own the 2015 Jeep Cherokee, assessed at $9,405. For the 2015 Ford F-450, assessed at $11,685. Assess value total is $21,090. Tax amount is $492.66. Taxpayer is Melanie Johnston, ticket number 306, line 8.
Approved ticket number 30693. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
This one's in our 2023 Personal Property Book, Abletown District. Taxpayer did not own the 2015 Toyota Sienna on July 1st of '22. Assess value $11,130, tax amount $260. Taxpayer is John Miles, ticket number 310255.
Approved ticket number 310255. Question, all in favor, say aye.
This one's in our 2023 Personal Property Book, Harper's Ferry District. Taxpayer did not own the 2018 Honda motorcycle, July 1st of '22. Assess value $1,182, tax amount $27.61. Applicant is Thomas Jones, ticket number 307598.
Ticket number 307598. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
The last one is in our 2023 Personal Property Book, Wayne's Incorporated. Taxpayer failed to remove his 2004 Ford Ranger. Assess value $1,080, tax amount $30.63. Taxpayer is William Campbell, ticket number 313318.
Approved ticket number 31. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Much, Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to move to Chef Hanson, number two. Commissioners.
I have a few items on your agenda. First is JAG grant for the continuation of PRO program of Jefferson High School. State provides $15,000 towards funding of this program. I'm requesting approval to supply, to apply for authorization for the president to sign the associated documents for the PRO.
I'll move to approve the application for the JAG grant. Continuation of PRO program. I'm going to ask the president to sign associated documents.
I just wanted to share to explain the program is so the public knows.
The PRO is, it's called PRO in this state. Other states call it SRO. It's a police officer that's stationed in the school, that teaches class, mentors children, mentors the students, and is, in essence, a figure to, in the school, to show that these kids are, that the police officers are not the enemy.
I just wanted the public to understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the schools, we do have this.
Yes, I have, I have the, I think I was the first SRO in the state of West Virginia in 1999, 2000, at the year at Jefferson High School. So it's a very, very valuable program.
Thank you.
All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Most curious, 40.
The second is the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This benefits numerous agencies within the eastern panhandle through reimbursing overtime patrols for, to address traffic issues in the region. These include speed, seatbelts, DUI, distracted driving, running red lights, stop signs. I'm requesting approval to apply an authorization for the president to sign the associated documents.
Any questions? I'll move to approve the application for the THSP grant. I'm going to ask the president to sign the associated documents. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary, 40.
We've been advised that we received an award from the courthouse security grant, the amount of $21,800. That is for the X-ray machines that I've spoken to about. We were granted 21.8. We've never received the official award documents yet, but anticipate a tight turnaround for the return of these documents. We are requesting approval to accept the award and the authorization of the president to sign documents when they arrive.
Any questions?
Is that on the agenda? Do you see that at the top?
Oh, it was in the package.
It's in the agenda packet right at the very top. The very first line. Oh, yes, okay, I got you. I'm sorry.
All right. I'm going to accept the funding coming from the court. The amount of $21,200 and offer the president to sign any associated documents.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Animal control, Robert Smith ended by resigning his position as animal control, creating a vacancy for the kennel tech position, and there was already a vacant animal control officer slot. These are both 40-hour positions. I'm requesting to hire Stephanie Daya, Dana, as the kennel tech, beginning at 9/11, with starting salary of $33,965. And Chance Boeing, as the animal control officer, beginning on 9/11, with starting salary of $40,628.
Same start time, 9/11?
Yes.
I'll move to through the hire of Stephanie Dana.
Dana, D-A-N-A, and the last name of the other gentleman is B-O-E-H-N-I-N-G.
I'll do one more at a time. I'll move to approve any Dana for animal control tech, 40-hour employee. Starting date, starting salary of $33,965, beginning dates 9/11. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Gary's 40. I'd also like to move a motion to approve the hire of Chance Boeing as an animal control officer, as a 40-hour employee, with starting salary of $40,628, beginning date is 9/11. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finally, as I've mentioned numerous times in our budget presentations, we are in dire need of full-time bailiffs. We have a lot of medical issues with our part-time bailiffs in this past year, as a difficulty finding replacements for our part-time staff. It's making it very tricky to man all of our required positions and stay within a limited part-time hours. A review of our last few years spending for part-time bailiffs shows significant remainders on the line item 48,000 in 2022 and 61,000 in 2023. Even though we earmarked 26,000 to assist in funding the full-time process server, we feel as though there's significant funding to transfer part-time bailiff funds to support the salary of creation of another full-time 40-hour bailiff position in annual salary of $35,360. We have also recently received, informed that we are losing three more part-time bailiffs by March of next year. We've also been advised that one of our part-time bailiffs been diagnosed with cancer, he's going to be going through chemo. We have a bailiff that does a bailiff and trip guard has told us that he's not going to do any more bailiffing, or just want to do trip, trip work. So it's even more vital to transition somebody from part-time to full-time. We have a young man that pretty much is at our beck and call. He, if we need him, we call him, he comes in right away. The problem we have with him is he's almost at his 10,040-hour limit. He's about 200 hours left, and he goes, and we have two and a half more months of the year. I'm requesting you create, allow me to move some funds out of my part-time bailiff, to my full-time, and create another full-time slot for this gentleman. His name is David Wappler, and he would be a 40-hour employee. And this, we've already talked to MK about it, and she knows that the money's there. This is a, as you like to ask, budget-neutral item.
It includes.
We did check on, I compared our numbers with the view of ringtone. It looks good.
Any questions? I'll move to approve creation of a new full-time. I'm going to approve the hire of David Wappler to the position. What's, what's the starting?
It'd be next, be Monday.
Monday. Who have? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary's 40. Just one.
That's all she marked.
Yeah, there's three here. Yeah.
My right-hand lady.
No doubt. There's just a lot of documents for once, only once. Yeah, thanks, sir. Everybody have a great day. All right, we're going to move on to agenda number three, Larkin.
Good morning. I just wanted to take a quick minute and introduce Teagan Bradley. She is my new office assistant. So our department works with every department. So I think it's important for our staff to see this process and understand what every department does. So I just wanted to bring her along and introduce her this morning. She's been with us about three weeks now in the office and is doing a really great job. So the reason I'm here, I have three open custodial positions, and I know if you're aware, probably about a month ago of this problem, and you agreed that I could RFP to bring in a custodial contractor. So I did that. Proposals were due September 1st. We had a pre-bid meeting with all the contractors that were interested. The lowest bid came back that also met all my qualifications in the RFP. Patent Building Services at $153,384 a year. It's about $12,782 a month. That also includes all cleaning supplies and equipment. The county still supplies paper products, toilet paper, paper towels, soap, trash bags, but that's industry standard for usually a cleaning contract. They are able to start pretty quickly. They've already sent me the letter of agreement. I did send that to legal. Steve Gro reviewed it and had a couple just simple clarifications amendments, and the company was agreeable to those changes. So they're reformatting that and sending it to me probably sometime today. So I'm here to ask your approval to contract with Patent Building Services. And this is budget-neutral. I'm going to move those three salary lines and benefits from salary to contracted services to cover the contractor.
Answer my question.
Okay.
And I did take a look at that, too, like what we.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Move to approve. Move to approve, had bill of supplies services for custodial services is recommended. Transfer funds from the facility salary line to contracted services.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Chris Ford zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to move to agenda number four, Liz Cook. Right hand man.
Yes, Jim. Good morning, commissioners. Hello, we are back. We were here last year to ask for your assistance in purchasing the garland that went around the magistrate building. We did purchase it last year. It looked beautiful. It's a lot easier to manage than what we had for how long, years? Long, long time. So now we are about to ask for the, for nine thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars to replace the garland that is around the columns. What you'll see is a picture of what the columns look like. It's basically hanging on by a thread. It is very hard for Jim to manage, trying to make it look nice with so many bald spots. So this will purchase enough garland to wrap the columns with lights, and it will last a good while. And just to, you know, an understanding, so we, of course, decorate the town, the city decorates the town. We put up all the lights, we do all of the garland, we do all of the wreaths, and it takes just about forty hours for them to, to take care of just the county buildings. So it's really important to the city to, to have it look nice and encourage visitors to come downtown.
Where we would take, maybe take this money from?
We can either pull it from the financial stability fund that is, are actually going to be increasing that on the next agenda. We had a carryover from last year than what we thought we did.
So what fund was that?
Stability fund. I don't have the number.
Seems to be a once purchase. We can't, or something like that.
I don't think.
How much money did we give last year?
About four, I believe.
Four thousand?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that number. I think it was around four.
And was that out of our fund last year? Or did that come?
It came from unsigned funds or.
Any further questions? Yeah, this was a phased project, so we just wouldn't have to eat it all at one time. That's why we, that's why we split it up several years.
So you were aware last year that this was going to come about again this year? Sorry, just, I'm new. Just asking some questions.
Yeah, we just kind of, kind of spread it out a little bit. All right, I'll go ahead and move to approve the quote of nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents. Purchase the garland goes on the courthouse for Christmas holiday. And these funds will come out of our financial stability account.
Second, Jeff.
Any discussion?
Have you gotten quotes from anywhere else? This seems really high to me. I understand that this do thing for, I don't know, but have you gotten other quotes?
We, I mean, we have from a couple other companies. This is no official quotes from, there's a few companies that do this. We get a discount through because we're a Main Street organization, so this company provides a little bit of a discount, and they're the ones that provided it last year at the cheaper price, so we wanted to go with the same, so they look the same. So because we chose this company last year, we kind of want to keep with the same company.
You know, I have to, it's actually pretty cheap because the county I was at previously just replaced their garlands, and it was about eighteen thousand five hundred bucks. Some things, the same for the, for the columns are from the courthouse. Yeah, so this is a pretty good price.
I'm thinking of going to Amazon and.
Well, it's like a, it's like a commercial, like an industrial grade, so it's built to stand up against the weather, lasts several years.
And the previous garland lasted how many years?
Oh.
I'd say at least twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. So it's not what we get using home.
Problem is, it's just falling apart right now.
Oh, I can, I can see that. It is quite bare in some. One thing to say is with my experience with these, it's break the first year and then the next year. They say they're not going to burn out, but they inevitably do burn out. And you, are you going to come back and say, well, there's lights to put on the garland and?
The way that this company works is that they will come back and assess problems. They're not, they don't just leave us hanging. It's more of a relationship with the company that comes in because it's commercial, so they want to make sure that we're happy with it and it's holding up.
So you have some sort of a.
Yes, yes, unless it's user error, unless we have done something, but I trust Jim.
Somebody fall off the ladder.
Yeah, I know.
And it's the courthouse, county property. Is there any contribution from Charlestown at all for the garland?
So for this, for, last year, we did split the expenses that went on the building's opposite, but we are just asking for the full thing this year. I mean, we are willing to negotiate and offer some money to help pay for it. I think because we put in so many work hours and, you know, it's a lot of our time, we thought we would just come in and ask for the full thing since it is just for the columns, and it's such a big part of Charlestown, so.
What, in light of that, can we see if Charlestown will be interested in contributing something to this before we make this decision today? Could we table this to the next meeting?
I'm okay with that. It would be nice if we could at least see if they. I'm new here. I, I, I haven't seen that kind of a number.
In my opinion, labor is the bigger number. You think about the years this is going to last and how many hours it takes to do this each and every year. So I think I'm fine with moving ahead.
It's a pretty standard to track, too, that the cities will provide the labor and the county provides assistance.
Yeah, I kind of feel like that's, that's sort of their contribution. It takes a lot of hours to put that up, and they do that every year. So this last, this last twenty years, it'll be money ahead because they're going to have more labor than we are on, for sure. Time you add up their lift.
I just, I would just like to see if we can offset. I mean, we've got a lot of things to cover, so just to see if we could get a contribution from Charlestown or Main Street or whatever that could.
I don't mean to seem jinty. It's just that we have a lot of. To us. Of course, they're all, you want to hand it all up.
Do you have a percentage in mind?
I had, I do not. Would there be some sort of a standard negotiation?
Fifteen percent.
Do you think fifteen percent would be fair to ask for? Would that be a good place?
I think that would be a good place to start, especially since they're providing the labor.
Say you keep the things moving, and I have a need to come back. I will rescind my motion. And I'll, since it sounds like the, the group is, would like to ask a contribution from Charlestown. So I'll rescind my motion, and I'll, I'll move a motion to, same motion, but strike the amount and ask, will ask Charlestown to contribute fifty percent of the thirteen dollars and sixty cents. That'll be my, my motion for asking for fifteen percent of these funds.
Second.
All right, second. All right, all right. Any, any more discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Right, that is, Chris Ford zero.
Thank you so much.
Next, do we have, you know, number five, Karen Olden, probate office.
Hi. So, and then there's Nikki Pean. Yes, I will be here in place of Karen. Unfortunately, I could not be here today. However, Mr. Carter is here from Old Rice. So the first thing that you have to do is convene as the fiduciary.
We convene as the fiduciary review.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
The first order, we did receive a motion from Mr. Judy stating that he had a previous appointment, and he asked that the commission delay this hearing again. Obviously, Sir Carter has a different opinion of that. Sure, he, I think he included in his packet that everyone should have received. We did receive that yesterday. He's asking for the commission to go forward, so I think that probably needs to be the first order is if you accept his order to delay or to continue with the hearing as scheduled.
I think we should move forward. I think it's.
I, I agree.
Do we need a motion to move forward with the hearing? Yes, sir.
Forgive me. I'm used to standing. Is it all right if I sit? It's just.
Very informal here.
So it pains me to say this because my client desperately wants to administer these estates. But I got a call, I, it's my duty to this tribunal to advise of what's happened, file our papers. We filed, as you know, a motion to remove Bill Judy's executor back in March. This, the council removed him back in March, and we sent him the order, and he was directed to do specific things. Didn't do any of them for three months. That's why we filed a motion for rule to show cause, which is our lawyer's way of saying, make him come in and tell you why you shouldn't hold him in contempt. And that was in July, July eighteen. The next day, this didn't make it into our motion because it happened the next day. Actually, it was about three days later. Mr. Judy mailed us this box of documents, okay? So that came after our motion for show cause. Box of documents doesn't really comply with the county commission's order. And so we wrote him, or we tried to communicate with him and made him aware that we still need these things. We filed, then, so, so then the county commission ordered him to appear at this hearing on August the third. He was notified by Ms. Olden on August the eighth. Filed his motion to continue sometime after that, I want to say in a, in the last week. Ostensibly the grounds for that motion were that he needed to be with his wife for her eye surgery in Cincinnati. Verify that. Mr. Judy has never called me. Alison Cox is here with me from my office. She's the one tasked with trying to actually help Mr. Hoffman administer the estate. She didn't have any communication from Bill Judy either. But that was his reason for not being able to be here, so I need to acknowledge that. We filed the supplement that you have in your package yesterday. Would like to file it soon, but it's time to get it together. And I got a call after we faxed it to Bill Judy's office yesterday. Something you wouldn't know. I need to make you aware of that. I got a call from David Judy, who is Bill Judy's brother. He's also a lawyer. He's also the law partner in Judy, Judy and Warfield. And David Judy advised me that brother needed to be in Cincinnati with his wife, couldn't be at the hearing, and that he had spoken to Bucky Morrow. They were going to step in and try to address the deficiencies that we had raised in our letter that's attached to your package in our files, so you should know that as well. I told Mr. Judy, David Judy, that I would report this to the county commission. I did not know what you would do with the motion to continue because taking it up now, then if, depending on what you do, you know, we would be prepared to go forward because ultimately it's your decision. So this is where I'm a little bit halted. It's understandable that Mr. Bill Judy needs to be in Cincinnati with his wife. And generally speaking, I don't think it's necessary to jam people. Other side of that is my client. My client has been trying to administer an estate for nearly two years. He is the sole beneficiary of the estate, both estates at this point, after numerous requests have been satisfied. And the, he's essentially being forced to spend his inheritance to get his inheritance, which we think is unfair. And that's why we've asked the county commission to take the extraordinary step and drastic step of exercising your power to find Mr. Judy in contempt. That said, I've spoken to Cochran, and we acknowledge that asking the county commission to do something like that is extraordinary. And typically, if you were to take some, a step like finding Mr. Judy in contempt, we believe it would be justified. That's going to probably be scrutinized, maybe by the county circuit. And so, this is where it pains me. May be prudent to allow Mr. Judy, until your next meeting in October, to come in and explain this, so that he has at least two opportunities to explain what he has and hasn't done to the county commission. I think it would be even less defensible if your decision to find him in contempt were appealed. And perhaps, hopefully, in the intervening month, Mr. Judy will get some help to help us straighten out some of these things. Now, I want to be clear, we're not asking, we're not suggesting that we would withdraw our request for contempt because we believe that after three months, your order was entered, the end of March, it was entered, it was, your decision was made at the beginning of March, yours was entered at the end of March. We got nothing. We wrote him a letter April eleventh. He didn't respond. We waited from April eleventh until July eighteenth to file this motion. And in those three months, we should have been able to do something. So we believe there is contempt. We're not withdrawing that request. But probably out of an overabundance of caution, it would end some, some humanity toward Mr. Judy and his situation with his wife. Probably be most prudent to allow him to come back at the next meeting. So it pains me to say it that way because I realize my client is spending money. Address that separately with the circuit court purposes of the county commission. I, I do believe it was prudent, of course, for me to give Mr. Judy that opportunity to appeal. Speak, Mr. South.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So I think that councils. It's just, when you do things like this, as a lawyer, you're always thinking about what happens. What happens next with Judy's? Proceeding today, we'll give Mr. Judy the opportunity to tell the circuit judge, they proceeded without my, on my side of the story. Continuing it. This is a just say Mr. Collier alleges that this is a fairly egregious matter, so there are other issues that. I'm saying is, I think that Mr. Collier's analysis is in that moving this to your next meeting with you.
I'd like to bring some, if Mr. Judy's wife had eye surgery today. Every, every indication says no, that he would not be. He continues to thumb his nose at the family. He just won't finish. I, I wonder if Mr. Judy would even do that. As he hasn't, he hasn't shown any. I wonder what would change giving him. I, I know that from what I have recalled. And his possession of the needs of one of the seats. He's not doing anything. He has had nothing.
I, I can't, it's difficult for me to disagree with you, and I'm not here to advocate for Mr. Judy. I think I should, in fairness, tell you that one of the things that Ms. Cox was able to do with Mr. Hoffman and his family members is contact the owner of some real estate that was conveyed and not part of the estate, Shepherd's estate, Rico Gallery. And, but the personal property, because they live there, in that house, that property is part of the estate. And one of the pro, I didn't want to necessarily get into all these details. And one of the pro, I didn't want to necessarily get into all these details, but you should know. One of the things we haven't been able to determine is, how do we get that personal property, which is part of the estate? We learned from the owner, the current owner, that he purchased the contents of that property from Mr. Judy as executor. But there is no list of the contents, nor is there an indication of what Mr. Oldenburg paid for the contents. So when we've consulted with Mr. Oldenburg and his attorney, they don't want to let anything go out of the house because they claim they bought it all. Now, they did concede, and I think we have the urns, so we do have the urns, so we do have the ashes. So I don't want that to, I don't want you to be misled by that. We were able to get the ashes. But everything else is in limbo because we don't know what Mr. Judy sold the contents of that house for, or what he actually sold. That's, those are issues that are probably going to have to be taken up at some point with the circuit court. But it is an example of the continuing problems we've had because Mr. Judy hasn't complied with this, this county commission's order from back in March. I can't say what he would do if he would be here today. I'm just looking ahead and thinking that if the county commission were to take the extraordinary, justified step of finding Mr. Judy in contempt without giving him the other opportunity to be here. That's exactly right.
And he's, and he's completely ignored. It's not as though he reached out to say, oh dear, I got sick, I can't be there. He just has ignored everything.
I can't disagree with you.
I feel for the.
And so this is where we are. But I did want to address the urn issue because they do have.
But that was recent, correct?
It was recent.
Yeah, so, so for all this time, they didn't have that, they didn't have that closure.
That's correct.
So around here, we get two options, either to lay it for to the next meeting.
I believe those are your options. Grant his motion to continue and move this to the next meeting.
You say next meeting, next two weeks or first meeting in October?
The first meeting in October is the day meeting, and I believe you prefer day meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to go to the day meeting. Especially if you want testimony from a witness. That was part of the notice, I don't know if we need testimony, but that kind of thing would probably be better handled during the day.
I would like to know if Mr. Judy does not show up, given him this extraordinary, which he does not deserve, if he does not show up at that next meeting, then what? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not interested in helping him get his hand in the grave.
I think what they're asking, and I know he doesn't want to advocate for Mr. Judy, but I think what he's asking is if you do delay it, then that will be less of a reason for them to appeal. So he's trying to cover in future, so he doesn't have this as an excuse to appeal. And then again, extend it out. I think that's.
The one thing I'll say, having raised five kids, you know, when you keep saying, oh, but next time, you better behave next time.
Well, I think he's looking for his interest of his client.
I hear you.
Yeah.
They, they have no regard.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. The only thing I would say is, well, whenever this decision is finally made, we are asking the county commission to take the extraordinary but authorized step of holding him in contempt and fining him $50 a day from the time that he reasonably could have provided this, which we would contend is sometime certainly after our letter of April 11, when we itemized many of the things that we did. So you can decide that, we can lay that information out for you further if you need. But that's going to be our request. And we hope, you know, and unfortunately, it took not filing the motion to remove, filing the motion for contempt, it took both, but we had to file a motion for contempt just to get this. And I will tell you that this box of documents is largely copies of things that we sent Judy. And we got a bill for $333 for copying it.
This is just highly disrespectful. I struggle to see what he deserves.
Again, I say, I agree. It just pains me because the, looking ahead to the next step, there's an appeal. In my experience, I will speak for myself, courts are rightfully very careful about contempt. And so it's best to have as clean a record as possible if there's going to be contempt fund. That's, that's what I can say.
I understand that. I think you have a better, better chance in court of this, less, less chance of this getting, if we delay it for 30 more days. I overly agree with Commissioner Kraus that he has disrespected his family members and handles the estate.
Motion to, move this to our October 50th.
Just had my calendar up. I'm going to have a motion to move this to October.
Direct this staff to, to.
Direct the staff to issue notices. Yes, sir.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't agree. I don't think any of us. Really got to put my foot down. I don't think any of us want to do this, but.
You too, but I.
For the, being able to add some closure to this, another date, and you know, you can't have a conflict. There's another conflict, we would definitely know.
I thought that was today that we already.
Well, it appears. We know at this time.
I can take it at face value. I'm verified by David Judy.
All right, any, any more discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
You may perish.
Don't forget to come out of this area. I mean, we return to.
Second, any discussion? All right, say aye. We're in regular session. Agenda item number six, Roger Gilmour, chief engineer.
Have two bond releases on the same project. The first one is asking for a complete release for the remaining $749,108 from the construction bond for SAB Real Estate Group II LLC. It's the Martinsburg Pike Rocks Planning Commission File Number S18-06/18-6-S. Project's located on the south side of Martinsburg Pike Route 55, west of its intersection with Route 480 up in Shepherdstown, and the work's 100% complete.
I'll move to release the remaining $749,000 from the construction bond, SAB Real Estate II LLC, Pike Rocks, file S8-06-18-6-S.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If Carrie should answer.
The second one, it is regarding a bond for an early grading permit. It's a complete release, the remaining $117,484 from the construction bond for the early grading permit for SAB Real Estate Group II LLC. Martinsburg Pike Rocks Planning Commission File Number S18-06/18-6-S. This project's located on the south side of Martinsburg Pike Route 545, west of its intersection with Route 480, and the work's 100% complete.
I'll move to release the construction bond, ER27124, Black River Insurance Company, SAB Real Estate Group II LLC, Martinsburg Pike Rocks, file number S18-06/18-6-S. That was, how much?
$117,484.
Seventeen?
$117,484.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where's your?
Can I just have one minute? Just wanted to mention, I have with us here today is Joe Kent, our land development inspector. And he's been with us more than 10 years, and Joe is retiring October 1st, thereabouts. And with him is Will Smith, the replacement for Joe. And Will is being trained by Joe right now. And Will worked for Dewberry Engineering and did inspection on a number of Virginia Department of Highway Transportation projects. So I just wanted to introduce them.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Kent for his years of service and also for his bench pipe playing and special events.
Oh, yeah.
Number 11.
And don't forget craft feeder fertilizer.
Yeah.
Joe, happy retirement, and Will?
Yeah.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number seven, Mike Sun.
Just a few items. First is, I have two employees that have requested, our employees, just a little background, our employees, right now, we don't start them off, we start off at a flat rate regardless of their experience. So we have a policy where they can apply for their years of experience credit. They have to provide documentation of career experience within fire and EMS service, could be military, whatever. We evaluate that, and then we, they get half credit. If they have 20 years' experience, they get half credit, according to our policy. That will move them 10 steps up a ladder. So I have two gentlemen who requested that, and one of them also acquired his EMT Advanced certification, so that moves him up to a higher level. He's an ALS provider now, which we desperately are meeting. So today, I, the first one, I need to move, to approve an hourly pay rate increase and promotion for Cory Walsh. As a result of a newly acquired certification, he will be promoted from firefighter EMT 2 to firefighter, firefighter A EMT 2. In accordance with AP 1192, he has submitted the proper documentation to receive seven years of service steps. His current pay rate is $20.16 per hour, and due to these promotions, he will increase to $24.87 per hour. This will be effective 8/27/23.
I'm going to approve the promotion increase for Cory Walsh, $20.16 an hour to $24.87 an hour, effective 8/27/23.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Post motion carries four zero.
All right, our second is Mr. Todd Turner, needing a motion to approve his hourly pay rate increase. In accordance with AP 1192, he has submitted the proper documentation to receive five years of service steps. His current hourly pay rate is $20.67 per hour. It will increase to $22.69 per hour, effective 8/27/23.
Need to approve the hourly increase for Todd Turner in accordance with AP 1192, from an hourly rate of $20.67 per hour to an hourly rate of $22.67 an hour, 69, sorry. That date is 8/27/2023. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries four zero.
All right, next item's just a recap of the fair. Pretty much went off without a hitch. There were a few transports, a few people treated there at the fair. Had quite a bit of participation from Midway and Shepherdstown on the EMS side, because we only handled the EMS, the volunteers, so I think Chief Watson handled the fire services. So, yeah, Midway provided 27.24 hours of service, covering five positions of the 30 personnel that were needed. Shepherdstown provided 72.65 hours of service, covering 16 positions. The ESA was left with 33.41 hours, nine positions of the 30 overall, we had to cover for the week. Yeah, there was total four patient refusals and four transports to the hospital throughout the entire week. Name was 31, which I discussed, and that's my next item. Shepherdstown used that item for the, that unit for their standbys, like they want to continue to do. And they did transport from, we had agreement, they transported from the fair since they were performing the standby. Total hours of service that was given to the fair was 133.3. And John, Captain Lyons, has completed all of that stuff and been in contact with Major Wilt out there, handling the remainder of the billing. And I believe that the fairs, normally, we don't charge for the volunteer portion of, but I think the fairs agreed to donate what would have been charged for volunteers to the volunteer departments. Worked out well for them. School football standbys have been going off without a hitch, so that's, that all seems to be working okay. Any questions on the standbys? Next is just to continue the discussion on nameless 31. We got the use agreements amended. I got a verbal agreement from Chief Demerit. We had to get together to get the signature, but he agrees to the amendment.
You brush me with the amendment clause.
It was an opt-out clause. If we agreed to the use agreement, which allows, if we purchase the unit and it is owned by the county, we allow them to continue. We will license it, own it, maintain it. They are allowed to use it for standbys, fairs, festivals, and assist with the, but Mr. Jackson had a concern that we felt like we were getting into a.
Committing.
Committing to purchasing it. We didn't, so, yeah, we added an opt-out clause. If it was, be null and void the use agreement if we did not purchase the unit. I did some investigation. I did order an appraisal for that unit, but I did find that it had already been completed last year when they did the rest of the units, in anticipation of purchasing both of those. At that time, Shepherdstown only wanted to sell one, that's why we had not purchased it. They, it is, like I said in the past, it is a sister unit to the other one that's purchased at the same time, a similar mileage. I had a maintenance inspection done on it by our repair shop. They found a few items, $2,800, some front-end work. Obviously, you know, it drives and operates, so any given day, it could have a failure just like the other eight unit that we had that, that was an independent unit that had transmission failure. But overall, they saw no major concerns other than this was typical for a Dodge truck chassis with mileage, it would need these type of repairs. The unit has no significant increase in mileage because it basically has been idled all these months since the transition. They, we've had some informal talks about cost. Shepherdstown would like to see, because it is basically this twin unit, they would agree to what they were given to the, for the other unit, the cost of the unit and the supplies, they, their sale was done separately. They did the unit with the cot, and then the mobile, the portable equipment that was in it, they did separately, which was different than the other departments. But I have documentation on what those, what we paid for those. So I have no real concerns. I just, really just need permission to move forward to negotiate with them on the purchase of it and maybe come, and then come up with a price and then be able to come back to you guys. I do.
See the appraisal.
Sure. I will tell you that the appraisals that are done are not close to what the prices that were paid. I don't know how they came up with the prices that they paid, but the prices that they paid for these units are significantly higher than the appraisals.
I mean, I would like to see.
So I can get you, I didn't bring extra copies, but I can give you the one I have or I can bring additional. I could send you all that.
I would appreciate, because I just want to remind, we had the update on the opera funds from Michaela. So it looks like we have about a million left, change. And there is an email from Ms. Gordon, I believe, the last time there was, in October 1922, 1922, where she was just cautioning, I think at the time, we had 1.6 million. She was just cautioning, I think at the time, we had 1.6 million left. That we had to consider fuel expenses, repairs and those sort of things. I'd be happy to resend that to all the commissioners as well, just a word of caution on with the remaining 1.6 million that was in there. So I would like to see the appraisal and first have a complete picture before we decide to move forward with.
Yeah, I do have a list of the fleet we have with the mileages and the hours on the motors. I can include that with you so you can see it. Generally, as far as a replacement plan, I don't, I didn't put together like a whole package. But typically in the fire EMS world, seven to 10 years is the max life on an ambulance. 10 is really pushing it. Right now, the demand, I could tell you that the price of that unit hasn't gone down in value because we're still recovering from COVID. Suppliers having difficulty getting supplies to build trucks, getting people to come back to work to build trucks. When we went and inspected the brand new ambulance, they told us if you were building a custom unit, which is typically what most places do, they don't just buy the demo. Because it doesn't fit your needs, you want it to match your other units or whatever you're trying to get to. That there's a two-year from, from the time of ordering to pick it up.
Well, I guess that's why we just need to have a complete picture.
Yeah, sure.
Keep adding fleet to, and the use.
Well, it's.
Two is that we need to. We.
Right, I think this will be the last purchase of an additional unit that's used. This, this is not only, you know, like I said before, this is multiple reasons for doing this. We need that reserve truck in Shepherdstown. There's no space for it. They, Shepherdstown wants to continue to provide service to the community. And I, I think it just wraps up the transition for them so we can move forward. I mean, we've come a long ways, we've got a good working relationship. You know, I, I don't know that a lot of other directors would have offered some of the things that I've offered to help work with them, to keep them. So everybody seems to be very positive on both sides. And we will be starting, will we put together a team to spec out new ambulance? Because that takes three, four months. And when we do that, we'll come back to request the RFP just so we can go ahead and get prices. We did look at some extra units when we were down there at the plant, some designs. Because again, it's two years out. So I would think we'll probably have to purchase two units. We'll get those in two years. And then from that point on, we should be on a 10-year cycle, we should be able to get one unit every year.
Consistently.
In average state, yes.
Design and everything.
Yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
Does anybody have any implications in mind? If you want a motion or not, but. Information to purchase. Amos 31.
I mean, if we could go ahead and negotiate a contract to bring back.
Yeah.
So that I know that we can go ahead and do that and then.
I don't know.
Work that out.
See all that.
Absolutely.
I don't think we need a motion, I think.
Okay. Sure.
So just go ahead and then.
It may not be till the October meeting because I believe they take everything through their membership and that'll be the day before the next meeting.
It's a follow-up question in the last meeting. Mr. Michael Jackson.
Oh, yeah, did you get those again this time?
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of information there and it is, it can be a little difficult because it's a mix of, it's a mix of fire and EMS in the stats, so.
So I know we talked last time, so we have an ESA column here, which I'm assuming is all ambulance. And then it shows the volunteer fire departments. Did we figure out or do we know yet how many of these volunteer calls staff was on or how many volunteers assisted?
On EMS calls?
These are fire. We've got Blue Ridge Mountain Fire Company. The Ridge Fire Company with 10 calls. So that wasn't ambulance calls or that was.
That's the, I believe that could be the combination of both. I, I'd have to look, I don't, I didn't bring a copy of it to reference it.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know how many volunteers assisted on those calls and how much staff went on those.
Fire calls, yeah, yeah, we're still trying to implement the, because we really are not quite ready to purchase. We can use our ESO software, which is our EMS charting software that we use for billing. They have a fire portion and all the volunteer companies, pretty much, I think the majority of them use that. We can get that and do, pull our information from them and build our reports. But it's like $8,000 a year, so I wasn't quite sure we were ready to ask for that yet. We were going to try to implement a paper form or electronic form.
I guess just hang with me here, in my curiosity. When a call comes in to 911 and apparatus is dispatched, we don't know if that's volunteer or paid staff on who, where the staff is. Like, are they on the fire apparatus or?
Well, it depends. If they're, if they're dispatching a call to. Gold's Gym, whatever it's called today, Charles Athletic, for an automatic fire alarm. The first due response company would be citizens. They're generally, it's a ladder truck and engine and not sure if an ambulance is too. But our staffing that is there, if volunteers are there, they respond. Then our staff backfills. If there's no volunteers, then they kind of split up, one, one crew will bring the ambulance and one will bring an engine or a ladder truck. If the call, let's say, is in Midway, we don't have any staffing out there. So independent, the crew, if volunteers are there, whatever combination it takes to get the unit, independent response, volunteers from Midway. And get out, same thing with the mountain, Bakersfield. So it's really, it's hard for us to track the volunteer side of it. Without getting the separate reports from them, but we hope to get a good grasp of what our people are going. Because we really need, we'll need that in the future to move forward with any type of grants or what point we get to the point where we try to get our state fire department ID. So.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to split that up a little more. I have talked to Russ with IT about getting a license for the crystal supporting Jeff uses for that. And getting access, access to it to build my own reports so that they look a little easier to read and it separates that. That is something we're working on in the near future too, so.
May I ask you a question? When I get my reports from the previous day.
Daily reports?
Yes. There, and I think we've had, we've had this discussion, people during the discussion. There are blanks on a lot of those dispatched to a level. And I still struggle to understand.
If you notice, if you read down. Depends on which report you're looking at, if you're looking at the one daily for like EMS. And it lists every call, you know, and gives you all the different items. You'll, you may see, most likely if there are blanks out here on the right, that there is the identical call more than one time. And if you look at the unit that started, the unit that, let's say, Amos 1106. Was dispatched at 10:05. But Medic 1102 actually responded at 10:07. So it depends on, especially like independent, they have the, the only station that has an ALS truck and a BLS truck. So ECC always dispatches a medic regardless of the call. And then it's up to the crews to decide if they read the notes and they feel that the call doesn't need the medic. Handle with a basic ambulance, then they take off and it creates those gaps in there. I try to clean it up when I make that report a little concise for myself, but just because I know what has transpired. I can get those amended ones to you so you can review like the weeklys. I do the weekly and I try to do that and consolidate the multiple.
I can see clearly how some people, I guess they.
Yes, it can be, yeah.
Don't go because somebody else is going.
And then there's times like citizens, you know, has two units and one of them has a lieutenant. So the lieutenant may come to Station 11 to do some, some duties or tasks that they have. And if the calls on the mountain, the crew that's still at citizens may not have gotten dispatched. Because ECC's computer alternates, whichever unit ran the last call, the other unit that's assigned there gets picked for the next call. So that unit may respond to the mountain because obviously they're closer than they are from Station 11. So that creates that void again. And sometimes it just, it just happens or where there's overlap, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, it can, it can be confusing. There's times where there's a lot of holes in there. I have.
More, sometimes more than not.
Yeah, if. Yeah, it, it's kind of just the nature of it with the way units are placed and the way we dispatch it. Not to the end of it, that's wrong, it's just kind of how it works. Making sure that the best unit gets to the call, the closest, the fastest.
While you're here, I want to jump down to, it's under County Administrator Reports.
I'm just going to walk out there because I got the map.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. How you doing? After this, we'll take a short break.
Do you need the space?
I can put it over top if you just want to.
Your phone, yeah.
So. I just need some more room in this, that's why I was going to. So, yeah, we all know that the three, I'm sorry, back to you guys. Where, um, the 340 Rock Project begins Tuesday, the 12th. You'll see the red and white up here is the road closure. Chestnut Hill will not be accessible to 340. That will be blocked off right up to Virginia's 671, which is between the two bridges right before you enter into Maryland. So, um, Delegate Redd Nowher and I, along with Senator Rucker, got together. I think this is great, the Department of Highways is addressing this, but there's a lot of ancillary things and emergency concerns that. Were thought of of closing this and how it's going to impact the community. So essentially, friendship's going to be cut off from going up Chestnut Hill Road and serving the lower part of the mountain. Then we've got citizens that is first due to the Shannon Dell Mission Road area. I want to add, which it's not highlighted on here. But there is a one-lane bridge construction going on right across on 115, right across the Shenandoah River Main Bridge. Which is monitored or operated by a traffic light. Also, I do know that Route 9 coming from Virginia or going to Virginia at Chestnut Hill Road. And this has been confirmed with Department of Highways. And 115 at Route 9 intersection, there will be no left turns permitted. Which is going to cause the potential for a.
It's not just no left turns, it's right turn only. And that's, we think that's, we, Senator Rucker, Commissioner Jackson, myself and others think that that's going to be a significant. Traffic impediment for people coming out of Chestnut Hill. Because most of those people want to take a left turn to go Route 9 into Virginia to get to work, get to Maryland, Virginia, potentially DC. And if, if we, if people do what we suspect they may do, which is do a right turn and then do a U-turn. We've got the potential for significant and catastrophic collisions in there, particularly during the rush hour periods, both in the morning and in the evening. So that, that's, we, we didn't feel there was enough information, that's why we're trying to hold a public hearing on Saturday. This Saturday up at Blue Ridge Primary School, it's going to be the primary schools behind the elementary school. But we, we think that we have to have some better discussion by Department of Highways as to what we're going to do. And have not only the Department of Highways, but our emergency services personnel, deputy sheriff, the sheriff's office. Is going to be there to discuss these types of issues and how we're, we're going to resolve it. We, we have some real concerns on the mountain about whether or not people are going to be able to make the turn. If, if we do need support from Loudoun County for fire and services up in the northern part of the mountain. Trying to make a turn on the Hostler Road or the right turn onto Chestnut Hill could be very problematic. We may not be able to get the normal types of emergency services support that we would get. From Loudoun County that we've been many, in many times dependent upon in order to try and get emergencies taken care of. Particularly, like I said, in the northern part, plus the, the, the bridge on 115 was a surprise. We didn't think it was going to happen until after this was done. That's what the, the Department of Highways had told us before and they've decided to go ahead and do it simultaneous. Getting a, an engine through that bridge is potentially problematic as well. It means coming up Route 9 and then coming down 115, which delays response as well. So that's why we have some, some concerns and I think Commissioner Jackson was going to address this, sorry.
So, you know, I spoke to Chief Kogle about mutual aid on Virginia in the event of a disaster. So he informed me, it's actually called Loudoun Heights, I know it is Nearestville. But Loudoun Heights is our first due, our first mutual aid call that's dispatched to come in. Loudoun Heights is on the detour route and will have to maneuver the cutback, not only the traffic congestion with no shoulders or anything of that nature. They'll have to maneuver the cutback at the intersection of 671 Harpers Ferry Road and Route 9 to get to the mountain besides the traffic. The second is Round Hill. There are ways to come, but unfortunately that is going to be going toward 340 Berryville area. Because they're going to have the same congestion and same problems. Then we move on to Percival, Hamilton and those, those stations. So we're here today, we, I met with, I went and did a, met with Mr. Lyons, Operations Commander. And I went to company five the other day, just to look at their quarters. I do know that they've got an occupancy permit from the county. We're asking that we reallocate a staff to the Blue Ridge Mountain during this. Construction, at least for the next 90 days or as far as the construction's concerned, to have a quicker response. In particular, potentially mitigate any risk or delayed responses from mutual aid or the first due area stations. So that's what we're asking for in anticipation. I mean, if we had a crystal ball, we could say, but we have no idea what's going to happen at this point. And we're just trying to anticipate any potential catastrophic event or disaster. So we're asking for staff, just a crew to be reallocated to the, the Blue Ridge Mountain during this event.
Add any.
Captain Lyons was at ECC last night, they were doing their rollout of their EPD FPD program that Jeff's. Getting ready to implement next week, so that, I guess they were doing training sessions so responders could, could see how it was doing. And they had a discussion about the closure. And seemed to be some miscommunication. The meetings I went to, the workshops that were at Ranson Civic Center, we were told that. Chestnut Hill would be inaccessible without contacting a site supervisor and getting permission and clearing the area for us to, to access Chestnut Hill Route. But the Justin Kors, I'm not sure if that's correct. Pronunciation, but either way, he told us that is incorrect. Chestnut Hill will have, road will have soft barriers on each side, barrels and signage. And it will be accessible to emergency vehicles. Either direction. They chose to put the soft barriers there in case. Well, for emergency services and if a tractor trailer comes all the way down Chestnut Hill and he can't get back up the road. They have no other choice than to let him down. Also, if something catastrophic happens on Chestnut Hill Road where it was going to be shut down for hours and hours and hours, we needed another route out. So we will be able to access Chestnut Hill Road. We've determined that it would at most cause a one-minute delay going to the two barriers, I talked to Jeff about it. He is going to put those temporary barriers in his CAD system. So it recognizes a 30-second delay for each stop to move the barriers, get through and, and back up. I did not know about the one-lane closure on 115. But I do know that even though it might be tight, they have to allow the certain clearance to allow commercial vehicles. So fire truck should be able to pass through that without a problem. I do not suspect seeing a major issue, getting emergency, getting EMS, which is what I'm charged of. To the areas. We handle dealing with traffic every day. We do Sunday traffic in Charlestown, which is horrible. We, our Friday evening, I'm sorry, Sunday traffic in Harpers Ferry. We've had to get through major accidents to get to other scenes. 95% of my staff have over 10 years' experience in fire EMS. They're well-versed in how to get places, they're familiar with the county, they know the routes. I also pulled times and call volume, I have copies of this for everyone, I've been working on that for the last two days. Just incidentally, before I knew Chestnut Hill was going to be re-accessible. Just incidentally, before I knew Chestnut Hill was going to be re-accessible, Blue Ridge Acres, which is the major community at the end, closest, the farthest on Chestnut Hill, currently is being served by Friendship Fire Company since our redeployment. On average, a seven-minute drive time from Friendship to there. That would now mean it would be an eight-minute drive time. Anticipating the closure, I looked at the distance from Citizens to get to that subdivision, 11 minutes. And then I looked at what, how long it took prior to March 1st, the way we were doing it when the volunteers owned the units, when we were at the public safety trailer, and that was 11 minutes as well. So had Chestnut Hill been completely closed, there would be, we'd be back to the standard that we had prior to March 1st. Again, I've said in the past, I know Captain Lyons went up and looked at Blue Ridge. There is some issues, some things we need to look at further. That station's location is, only serves and benefits greatly the northern side of the mountain. Citizens is closer to Mission Road. CAD determines that. The computer has all its factors in it, speed, barriers, all that stuff. It's not human-controlled. Citizens' response to Mission Road, putting a crew in the main station pulls that crew out of Citizens. If you moved that crew out of there to an area with volume that is equal to Middleway, who has no staff. The times around the county, that how we serve now, the mountain for the most, the general, most part of the mountain, with the exception of the end of Mission Road, obviously. There, around the county, I took some notes, and again, I'll give you copies of this. Let's just say, Independent goes to the Sheriff's Office, takes 10 minutes. The community at some point, 13 minutes. Happy Creek Subdivision in some point, in Middleway, 15 minutes. Town of Lee Town, 11. Riverside Acres in the Harpers Ferry, Bakeran District, 14. Shepherdstown comes to that, it's also 14 minutes, so it's a split either way. The Glen Haven Community in Bakeran, 10 minutes. Norwood, where there's multiple subdivisions on 230, 10 minutes. Shandale's Gate 3 and 4 for Citizens, 11 minutes. The Riverside Community at the end of Mission Road, 23 minutes. That is way out there, there's no other access. We know it, Mission Road's a dead end. That is probably the longest of all calls in the county. Riverbend C, Steeplechase, Shepherdstown goes to 12 minutes. Leisure Way on the north end of Jefferson County and Shepherdstown, 10 minutes. So like I said in the past, I know people have a hard time swallowing the fact that there were ambulances in every volunteer company, but currently, we have a certain amount of personnel and call volume we have to handle. The volume is in the Charlestown area. I have the statistics that show all the other districts, the times are comparable. We are providing adequate service to the mountain community. I feel confident my people can get through any type of construction, any type of traffic incidents, like we have all the years we've provided service. There may, there will be some delays for Nearestville coming in. They're not going to, they would, if they're coming to the mountain, they would come up Route 9. They wouldn't go all the way down 671. So that would be an issue for Harpers Ferry. Jeff did tell me that none of the fire chiefs have approached him yet about modifying their box assignments, which is the units that are picked for fire calls. So not sure, that's up to the fire chiefs. They need to amend because you're not going to get Brunswick or Nearestville and Harpers Ferry, Bolivar. We use Loudon Fairmount on the mountain to back us up. Percival, Round Hill, very rarely do we see those units. It has to be pretty catastrophic fire. You know, our crews, we are responsible for EMS, but we do do fire as well. And that was another reason why we have few units in Charlestown beyond the call volume is being able to have an adequate crew to do fire suppression. The greatest number of calls are there. If I had 28 more people, I would put them in the remaining, well, I would put them in Bakeran and Middleway. The mountain needs a station at the top of the mountain to serve, adequately serve both sides of the mountain. It needs a station somewhere. Mannings or Chestnut Hill. Chestnut Hill at Torrance is optimal because you go down either direction, north or south, and you go to Charlestown down Route 9. And there's just no way around it. I've looked at statistics. I think that has been identified many, many years ago. That's why Mission Road Station was built, to assist the Shandale community. So I'm not saying there's not a need everywhere. I'm just, we're doing the best with the cards we're dealt. And I feel confident that as far as EMS goes, we're going to get there.
I would say, I'll jump in just for a second. Route 9 is going to be a disaster every day. And that includes probably Saturdays and potentially Sundays. I mean, it's going to be piled up with people who are jumping off of the 340 closure and are going to have either one of two ways, really, realistically, to get to where they need to either work or where they're going to be going to. You're going to see a lot of folks go up to Shepherdstown because they're going to Maryland. But those folks that are going, you know, 340, 270 down to the northern suburbs of Virginia, using that route are probably going to try and come down 9. I'm going to encourage, and we are encouraging as many people as we can to go 340 down to 7 and then across so that we can reduce the amount of traffic. But this is going to be piled up every day with traffic that's far greater than what we've normally had. I don't think we're going to get the support out of the, particularly down 671, the intersection there with the lights, even if they redo the timing and everything. You're just going to have enough vehicles there that you're going to have a very difficult time getting engines around that turn and up Route 9 because people, it's a two-lane road. I mean, most of us have been down that thing hundreds of times. It's going to be very difficult to get engine support up that way. So fire or EMS, ambulances, potentially, yes, but engines, I think that's going to be problematic. And that's, that's why I think that the people on the mountain really would like to have some professional support, at least during this period. I mean, if we could get a place up by Torre Lones for an ambulance, that would be awesome, permanent. But, you know, at least during this period, we would request some support from the commission.
Right, right now, as it stands, on a typical fire response on the mountain, if it's a structured fire, you get five companies. You're going to get Company 5 is the main company. You're going to get Harpers Ferry, both Charlestown companies, and you're going to get 626. We're still going to get our responders, if they're available, going to be running the fire trucks from Harpers Ferry and Charlestown to the mountain, just as they do now.
I have, so I drive the 115 with that bridge closing, and I can tell you, it does back up with the delayed light, and it is a narrow passing. I mean, it's barely passable for a car to get through that, let alone a vehicle in an emergency situation. Now, I will say, the lights could have been positioned better and left a wider opening, but they're not. The lines are very tight to those Jersey walls. So that is going to be an impediment. And also, with the Chestnut Hill Road, even though, I mean, emergency could possibly get through with movable barriers, does the computer calculate in human moving those or the vehicle stopping as far as response time to move those barriers in order to get through? Because it, I mean, you've got barriers there or obstacles there that are going to delay that time.
I was under the impression from some of the meetings that I went to that they were going to be using barriers that had headlocks or locks.
Beyond Chestnut Hill, that's what was our original impression as well. But that hard barrier, they call it with a lock, will be beyond Chestnut Hill and on the other side by the gas station.
This public hearing is Saturday? It is Saturday at 10:00 AM in the Blue Ridge Primary School cafeteria, just behind the Blue Ridge Elementary School. Parkings back that way. And we're so trying, we're making sure the Department of Highways is going to be there. Senator Rucker contacted the Governor's Office to get their direction to DOH to appear. We just have not been satisfied with the limited amount of information provided to the public. That's why we felt that it was necessary to do something to get them in front of the public so we could address many of these issues. Because there's other issues besides EMS and fire. I mean, we've got waste management issues because, you know, trucks have got to make those turns a lot of times. But the top of Chestnut Hill, there's just going to be a vast amount of traffic, we think, on Hostler Road. People trying to make a left turn there is going to be an issue. So we're trying to get dealers to put signage up that will warn people of a dangerous intersection there. The sheriff is talking about trying to potentially put a deputy there to help ensure that people are doing the right thing, turning left out of Hostler onto 115, as well as a deputy up at the top of Chestnut, at the top of 9, then where Chestnut Hill meets it. And we're hearing that the Virginia State Police will potentially be putting a officer up at the border there as well, because we anticipate major backups both ways during, throughout the rush hour period, which frankly is going to, I think, go from 3:00 AM to about 8:00 PM.
I understand your concerns. I know it's not good now, it's going to be even worse. And I think there's, we all need more information from DOH. Commuters don't understand it's going to be shut down and how they're going to work.
I would say there's a great Facebook page that was recently started by Brian Ward, who owns the Sweet Springs Liberty Station. He started it, he's got a lot of followers on that. And that, that Facebook page is already proving beneficial with the recent closure yesterday on 9 due to a tree coming down and taking some power lines down. That's really helping, we're pushing people through that to go to that Facebook page. It's kind of a central location.
We really need to know from DOH if it's stage construction, how long, put some decent signs up so people know.
There's been some signs on Route 9 and a couple of other locations, but the amount of information has just not been there.
Well, and the main concern, like even with those signs, it's not saying right turn only, starting next Tuesday, I would say.
Very confusing.
The other issue is, I mean, we have a huge population that's not on Facebook or the internet. And hindsight's 2020. I think mailers, everybody gets mail, so mailers would have been appropriate. But here we are, you know, it's the starting Tuesday night, and I just think it's going to be a potential major disaster that we're going to have to figure out.
And, you know, I understand your thought of bringing staff on the mountain, but I don't think we have enough details to make an informed decision. I don't think DOH has told us. We really need to know more of the schedule and what they are going to do to assist the emergencies, your emergency vehicles.
I just had a few points to add as well, just for information purposes. I'll say for the record that anytime I'm giving y'all advice or a suggestion, it's strictly based on either financials, operational, human resources, and human capital. So I'd like to send someone or a representative to meet with Chief Kogle and do like a little walkthrough, like they would do with any fire or EMS station. According to, you know, guidelines and whatnot, you have to have certain standards met or to be habitable. That's important, you know, we don't want employees hurting themselves on anything. We want to make sure that there's safety, we want to make sure that everything's up and running and working. And Captain Lyons provided me with 12 different points of concern. There are just two that I would say that should be, should be addressed, whether or not we put an ambulance up there. That's your decision. But if you did vote to do that, I think that we need to make the public aware that the alerting system is currently inoperable. And so if they were in there, they would only be using like their pagers and their radios. And according to the EMS staff, it could be a little spotty up there. Just to take that into account, because I don't know how quickly they could get that up and running. And also, they don't have workstation set up yet, but that is provided by ESA in the county. It's just that there's no available office space right this time. They have a lot of storage issues going on. It doesn't matter to me what you decide, I just wanted to make you aware of those two challenges. I don't think, at least the alerting system, would be up and running by Tuesday.
Will you or a representative be able to go to that meeting on Saturday from ESA?
Yeah, I did receive an invitation, but I saw it on Facebook yesterday, the only reason I know about it.
I think, I'm kind of with Jay, I think we need some more information. And then you can...
I think it's going to be very difficult. We know it's going to be a mess, that's unavoidable. It's going to be very difficult to anticipate how it's going to flow, how it's going to work. Is it going to truly be an impact to emergency services or not? You know, if, if we choose to not move a crew up there and we see after a week or two that, yes, after several calls, there is an impact, then we have to make adjustments, just like we, we are here to evaluate call volume. I've been doing it. I can only do what I can do. If, if the basis of this is really more, a lot about fire, we're setting a precedence there because EMS is what we're tasked to do. Fire is something we do to assist the volunteers. We find ourselves doing more and more of that as the amount of volunteers dissipate, which is a national trend, let's fire any EMS. So it just pulls people away from established crews where the volume is. I don't like it, that's why we haven't done it.
Yeah, well, I think, I think if you could, you or a representative could attend that on Saturday. I know it's Saturday, your Saturday. And then obviously, I mean, you're the director, you can make these decisions. I mean, if you've got to juggle around your crews, you can juggle around your crews. I mean, it's not a really a commission decision, I don't think. And if you get into road closure and we're three or four days in the road closure, you need to do something else you can do, and that's all at your discretion, I would say.
I'm sorry, I just want to address one of the concerns with, as far as the system being available. I mean, they don't have a crew up there now, right?
No, they don't.
Right, so we would have to work to get that alert system up and going if we put a crew there, obviously. So do we wait until we decide to put a crew there to address that? Or do we say...
That's not something the county purchases, is the in-house alerting system.
I'm just saying, is, it's not there now because they don't have a crew. They just finished their construction. But it would be something we'd have to work toward, or they'd have to work toward, obviously, to be alerted for these. So, anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to address that since I was thinking.
Do you want to give a timeline?
How long it would take?
How long it takes to get...
Varies on what type of system, what type of vendor, what they're trying to put in. It's all over the place, especially, I hate saying COVID, but everything's worse since COVID. And I will add, you know, I've been involved in the fire and rescue services in this county since I was 17. I've lived here my entire life. I hold no ill will to any area department. You can, anyone can ask anyone about me, about my integrity, about my service to the community, other departments. I work with everyone, and I want the best for this community, for this county. But we struggle due to our budget and our staff. It is nowhere near what we, where we should be at this point. And again, that's just something we have to work on. And we have to deal with things like this and do the best for everyone. So, you know, I'm open to listening and talking to everyone, but I just, at this moment, I don't feel until we see, you know, we can plan and make sure things are ready at that station. But until I see an actual impact that we have not anticipated, that our people cannot negotiate, I can't commit to that. We just don't have the extra resources. We're pulling, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
When, and as long as you're planning on attending the meeting, if anything changes, you can certainly make that decision. Anything changes, you can certainly make that decision. If you say we don't anticipate, you're not anticipating something, and you can certainly, you know, move crews around to offset it, I guess.
Any given day, something can happen. I mean, they had an issue Slagle, up by Slagle Road there on Route Nine. Route Nine was closed yesterday, apparently, for about 12 hours. Power lines were down or something. So, that was on the Virginia side. So, any given time, things like that happen, and we have to deal with it on the fly. This is just, we'll deal with it a little longer term. Well, the issue may not be in the exact same spot every day. You know, traffic's going to be everywhere. We understand that. But yeah, I'll be there for the meeting.
Okay. May I ask any questions? Thank you. We're going to take a quick break, and we'll come back with any.
Before Saturday.
All right, welcome back. We took a short break. We accidentally missed someone that lined up to speak and public comment earlier. So, we're going to circle back and give Mr. Adam McDowell for a minute to speak. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. My name is Adam McDowell. I live on, on Lake Shenondale. We were extremely happy with the original planning commission's decision to vote down the cell phone. Since that time, obviously, there's been some developments on the case. We are, as very concerned citizens about what has transpired, I think, to date. We look to the county commission here to, you know, have the process be open, transparent to the public. And, you know, take a look at, I was looking at the map that we had up here originally, and I keep saying, is there another 55-acre lake with beautiful scenery that we have in Shenondale, the Harpers Ferry? Because I'm, you know, kind of blown away by what I've seen to date. The zoning of this area and the proximity to the houses where people live is their home. So, I would just ask the commission here to please, you know, be public and transparent in what the process is moving forward. And please take consideration into the folks that own property there that call their homes. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
All right. I'm going to jump past Nathan and just go start on unfinished business. I'll come back to you. I don't have anything to report on the Charlestown District Commission vacancy at this time. I know a gentleman, that was one of the names that were submitted. He was getting his opinion advisory today, out of my understanding. So, we'll have more of that next meeting, I'm sure. As far as the EVO top TIF application, they put that back on the agenda for old business, so we can have any discussion with our legal counsel. And if you had any questions for Nathan, or Nathan had a, I think he was coming back with some information for us too. So, I'll turn them over.
Last meeting, commission meeting, grave regarding, are you a counsel to deal with this particular issue? It's a special last issue. I made some comments about that. And I have a name. I've been informed, two or three lawyers in this state. So, this name was provided to me by Charles Town. I have information if you choose to get this person, choose someone else. That's your decision. I've been informed, not that many years, with this issue. Mr. Stumpf, that some of those may be conflict with the law. Representatives Charleston. Concerns that Charleston has are something that we have to raise. Just, just saying. So, I'm only passing, when we undo it, passing the information on the table.
Just wanted to share something in relation to that, because I know we had said people listen to us outside advisement. At the auditor's conference, there was a gentleman there out of Randolph County. I did call him last night just to find out who they, you say have, actually, it's, I believe. And he shared some information with us over lunch. But I did reach out, and I was going to pass the information on to Michaela to find out who they used. I believe he indicated last night, he couldn't tell me attorney's name, but similar to what you're saying, there's only a few in the state that can speak to this. And I believe there was one out of Charleston that they used, because I know they're closer to Charleston than we are. So, I was just going to pass that information along to Michaela for you to pick up at, Nathan. I didn't realize that you had.
Yeah.
Done this, because I was just telling Michaela, I said, wait a minute, we didn't actually give her direction to do that, but I'm glad that you took the initiative to.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't really have any recommendation. It's all yours' decision. I've just only got the information. I'm asking it along. You know, if you.
I was saying, maybe for another option this morning. It might be the same attorney.
Might be. I have no idea. That's.
Jackson Kelly's in, for, and Charleston.
They're all over. It could be the same. It could be the same offer. Yeah.
Um, okay. Yeah. So, it sounds to me like missions, mission like to seek outside or advice. Do you all just want to come, just go out a motion to hire an attorney? I mean, like you said, there's only one or two that we could probably use.
Are we eligible? Are we eligible? Is it allowed to use an attorney if we can't find somebody? There's nothing.
I don't, I don't think it would preclude it. It's just that it's.
Have to be licensed.
It's unlikely. Well, that, but then it's also, I don't know if there are attorneys out of state that have dealt with. Our law is specific to West Virginia on this issue. So, it's more likely to find one in-state than outstate. Outside of that, and the licensing issue.
Yeah. I don't mind having a specialist to review all these documents. I certainly don't have a problem with either Michaela or Nathan choosing an attorney that he feels qualified to do that. What's the thoughts of the other committee?
I'm fine with that. I wouldn't. I'm no expert, so that's what I'm looking for is an expert.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would, I would hand that.
All right. Yes, I think she'll, I think she'll do fine. All right. I'll move, I'll move a motion to have our administrator, your county administrator, to hire a qualified TIF attorney to review these documents. And then, once they review, we'll schedule a meeting. If it has to be a special meeting, we'll do that to report back to us. Anything else you want me to add to that?
I mean, we want to, the cap one fee or fund or anything of that nature, would we.
I could just use best judgment when I'm talking to you.
Yeah, not to, yeah. I mean, we, I think we have to be mindful of the expense, but we need the advisement, but we had to be mindful of the expense.
Yeah. Be mindful of the expense that you're, rarely, like you're speaking.
I've worked in a law firm, so for the district attorney, so I got you.
All right. All right. I think, I think you understand. And then, if we can, like I said, if they can, you can hire them, give the documents for them to review, and then perhaps we have a, a special meeting, we can do it the next meeting. Next meeting's a Thursday night meeting. Sometimes they run off, but we'll figure it out.
Did you make a motion? A second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries four zero. All right. We're going to move back to Nathan now. Item number eight.
Can you mind if I just jump in on one of my items?
Sure.
I have an office here.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yes. Okay, never mind. Please continue. She's having a great time.
All right. We haven't put you to sleep yet, huh? All right.
All right. Unless, unless you all request more information, then I'm going to give you.
Oh, I'll let you.
Okay. Item number eight, United States District Court case. That is a case related to the cell tower issue in Shenondale. Essentially, what occurred was the planning commission denied, it's kind of complicated, but denied a concept plan that was presented to them. Cell tower construct found a case in federal court, asking for that decision to be, there have been, there's an offer made by the cell tower company to settle that case, and commission is made. That's kind of where we are at this question. The reason, the only reason that I brought it to you is because they also named the commission as well as the project. I think that was probably a rezealousness on the part of lawyers from, wherever their lawyers are from. It's a nominal, you are named, so I brought it here to just make you aware. Real, yeah, this against, I can give you more about that, but. The next case is our case with Civil Service Commission, just advising, just the documents. Some issues arose, and the matter has been continued. Scheduling conference, you know, in 30 days or so. And that's all that I can really give you in this session. The last one, gee, those are all kind. The last one, gee, those are all condemnation suits. That were filed really against the sheriff and I'm just, I mean, the sheriff was a normal party. Whenever. West Virginia Department of Highways. Department of Transportation files a condemnation suit, of course, they have the right to. So unquestionably, they can file a suit. Eight often named the sheriff of the county. Because the sheriff is an interested party because we need to ensure that the taxes that. He knew on the property. So that's the only reason the sheriff is. Again, I'm just making. Doubling just for information. That's really a repeat. Some adjustment to. There's not really anything.
Back to. Service Commission, is there anything for us to do on that at this? So it's against the county commission because removed?
Yeah. What happened, what happens is the statute says that we had to file. Involve. Challenge that. Circumstances really outside of the. That's all I can tell you. Executive session. It's just, it's proceeding, but it's just.
Okay, thank you, does he have any questions for Nathan? Here and then we'll move on to new business.
I am sorry, I do have something to discuss regarding. And because this is about.
Yeah, I mean.
It's on the agenda, I'd like.
You want to go into executive session?
Every time we discuss solar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm not the arbiter. There's a conflict.
This is noticed on the. Do every time.
I'm not the arbiter that you saw, perhaps that, I don't know if you would like to.
Every time. I'm not going to discuss it until.
What, can you tell me exactly what you, because this, this is a legal matter.
Yes, it is, could you please recuse yourself, it's about solar.
Is there like a legal update you want to give? Because that's what.
Commissioner, this is regarding. We discuss solar. I'm requesting kindly, respectfully to the.
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean, it's a legal update, it's a legal update, but that would, Nathan, I'm kind of confused.
Agenda item. The solar text amendment. Perhaps you could step out and get what the commissioner has to say, it's not directly related to this.
Oh, yeah, that's why I was, that's where I'm confused that this is a legal update. Nathan had to give a legal update. That's why I'm confused.
She's afraid to ask him. Regarding it, so.
That's where I was, that's where the confusion is.
For matters of discussion on AP, I'm going to nominate Commissioner Kraus to be the presiding officer, this discussion.
A second.
Discussion.
Why do we need? As our presiding officers. I know who's.
We don't have a vice right now.
Right, yes.
We don't have a vice right now, that's what I'm doing, so all in favor?
Aye.
Where's yours? Where's yours?
Very much, so pertaining to the issue. Do make a motion to rescind. Twenty-two oh one, section eight.
If I can just step in, not entirely sure if that's.
I have looked it up, I've done my research, I would not.
It's not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, we've left it on the agenda for a long time.
But it's a legal update.
Not canceling, not canceling the solar text amendments.
The discussion and potential actions. Second. Is there any discussion?
I don't think it's adequately noticed in any way, these are all, these are listed in Nathan's. Update and. No agenda.
On our agenda.
I'm not finished talking. It's not adequately noticed compared to other actions that we have taken. It should be. Exactly as you said in your motion. The subject.
I don't know quite how to respond to that, except to say. There's a motion on the floor. We have a motion in a second.
I would respectfully suggest that.
But Nathan, I didn't ask you.
Understand that.
Thank you.
The question is, do you want your motion to be successful?
Yes, sir, I do, and a repeal is a little different from amendment. With respect to others' rules which we do.
Jane, I would advise you recuse yourself, just because I'm not entirely sure. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's illegal, I don't have the knowledge, so.
I'm just saying there are, right, there's a plethora of issues related. In their good stewardship.
I, I don't, well, I've been. I have been researching. So there's a motion and a second. Discussion done.
I'm just going to reiterate, I don't think it's adequate. Action.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. She's.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number. I guess this will be new business. County, County Museum Commission.
I just wanted to let everybody know that this is the new, this is the new board that will be forming. They're still working through getting their bylaws and everything like that, so I have this on there. In case anybody was interested, I have a member of the commission appointing themselves to that, well, having them, being appointed to the board when. They have it established, so making you aware.
And I, I think that the name is sort of, it's no more to me, I mean. I understand it's going to involve the three counties. County museum. That's confusing to compare.
I mean, it really probably maybe should be like the, like the regional airport. Regional. Can handle Eastern.
I just, I want to make a few comments related to the code permitting this museum to be made. Seven eleven A three. Where the commission is empowered to employ personnel. Contributing funds to yet another. Organization that is not an essential service or. There's also the word eminent domain used a lot in this code, and I'm not interested in infringing on anybody's. Personal property rights and potentially taking their property. Those are just my concerns out of the code that permits the establishment of that museum. I don't want to commit the county commission to any type of funding or possibly engaging in eminent domain and taking people's property. That's just my comment.
Yeah, no problem, I wasn't asking for action today, so I'm just, just wanted to move.
All right, you want to move on to.
This one's just an FYI. The county completed. A emergency medical services salary enhancement fund survey. Send to. This is allocated based on whatever the state decides. Have that in on time, and these funds can be used to assist with, as it says, enhancing salaries for med staff. And it also allow us to use a percentage of that funding to fund a crisis response team. We don't have one of those currently, we actually go to Berkeley and use Berkeley services, so. And I have the state budget revision and its associated resolution. Going through the finances, we discovered that. Capital outlay projects for each of the departments were lumped into one. Financial stability account, and that's not where they were supposed to go. So, Cassie and I worked and we broke that out into its proper location. Budget neutral, it's just moving it into the right line items and account numbers.
We approved the state budget.
In discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for catching that, that's an important distinction.
Just roll call vote that. Thank you. In case they ever watch.
Voice analysis.
All right, and then just, just a tidbit to add on county updates and budget, I have to give kudos to the team because. We discovered that there were some unclaimed checks that were out floating about that have not been cashed. We were able to. And then, as soon as I find my healthcare. Yes, so we took on ESA, and now we have to do the negotiation for their benefits renewal. And so eventually, we're going to pull counties' benefits and the ESA benefits into one package. The way that their renewal dates work this year, to give them separately. So this is just a motion requesting you to approve the. This year. Contributions to the medical potential.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Anybody who has, motion carries, you name it.
So. I am representing the Jefferson County Development Authority and on their agenda items today, so have Ryan present. Say hello, Ryan. So we are asking to fill. A vacant position. Candidate is Taylor Sisk, she will be a project specialist, salary at forty-two thousand a year. And the start date will be October 2nd, 2023. I will add, her resume was very impressive, she has a bachelor's degree from Shepherd University in economic development. She also has a minor in market, I think she'll fit in really great.
Where is this listed on the agenda?
It's under county administrator report, and it is the second to last, it says staff.
Staff, okay. It's for JCDA.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll move, move higher for Taylor Sisk for forty-two thousand dollars a year, starting date is October 2nd. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Carries four zero.
And then the next is just an FYI, we have some great community initiatives going on, and Eddie did mention this at the last meeting. They are implementing something called. Small business classes where there's going to be monthly meetings with entrepreneurs and small business owners. Having classes on budgeting and, you know, how to recruit and retain valuable staff. Even some legal presentations and such, which will help to bring more local small business to Jefferson County, which is the resident. And it will be held at the Blue Ridge Community Center. Ryan, if you want to.
All right, so. I'm sure as soon as you guys know, last year or the year before, we applied for a grant with the United States Department of Agriculture, we were successful in that application. And implementing a program called Agriculture at Home, Jefferson County, and what this does is promotes Jefferson County grown items and Jefferson County made items. Farms and businesses would apply to us to use either of these logos on their products, and that way, when you guys are out shopping, you know, Bushland Pack, the farmer's market, wherever you shop for your stuff. You see that Jefferson County grown logo on, on a product label or the Jefferson County made logo, you know that what you're buying was made right here by your neighbors. You're supporting your local community, as part of that, we've got sweatshirts with those logos on them for each of you all, we had asked for your sweatshirt sizes. A while ago, so I've got those in this bag. I am terrible, if you can ask my fiancee about how I am with laundry, so I'm sorry, these are all wrinkled and balled up and pulled up in here, but. I'll hand those after you, and that's pretty much all we've got, I did label them with your all's names, so I wouldn't get, I wouldn't get lost.
These are valued at twenty-five dollars or less?
Yes. And more, and that's all I've got, and that's it for me, I'll be out of here today. Shorter probably than the last time I gave you this. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Want to wrestle it on.
A little cold in here, y'all, if you want this. Y'all have a good one, thank you very much.
Just so you know, on the agricultural front, our.
Just so you know, on the agricultural front, our, my neighbor is going back into producing. You know. Testing it and selling it. Richard and his wife.
Where's he selling it at, at the farm?
The only place I know right now it is, is that Bob and Nancy Tabs, Dark Lane. I think he's gonna, Fredrick have some other outlets. Okay. Blue milk and scrumptious chocolate.
You have anything else, Michaela? Well, no objection, just word, Jer, thank y'all. All right, y'all, give you your pen back, so. And your sheets, yep, see, I, I told you I'd give you your pen back.
We are.